This conference will now be recorded.
It's a big crowd compared to the other night, huh?
Yeah.
Hey, I don't know if I want to do this. I need at least two, three hundred.
Okay. We'll call this a special council meeting slash work session to order. If I could go ahead and have a roll call, please, Arlene.
Robinson, Oldham, Marshall, Bogus.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
And Bliss.
Here.
Okay, we have one item on the special council meeting portion of the meeting tonight, which is the Citizens Committee for Zoning Issues Research, the Transitional Services Committee. You recall that was a product of the work session that we had last Wednesday night, where we all came together and then that committee was, our staff recommended that that committee be formed. So Thursday and Friday, I scrambled and got ahold of everybody for that committee and we got a committee together. So all these people have been contacted and they're willing to serve.
And you're going to ask us to approve that thing?
Yep.
Can we talk, I mean, I've vowed on planning and zoning and they're not sure how this fits with planning and zoning. Can you talk about that for a second?
Yeah, so what, the way I understood it is, so this committee will go ahead and they're your subject matter experts. They're going to work with legal to come up with a recommendation for planning and zoning. That'll go to planning and zoning and then they'll come down.
Okay.
Arlene, can you go ahead and read the appointments?
Please.
Oh, go ahead.
So they're essentially going to design the service.
Well, they're going to come up with, they're going to look at our current zoning code and what amendments we need to make to that in order to make those services possible.
I'm going to say they have to have a service.
Yeah, and there are people on this committee from, that represent kind of both sides of the issue.
Would you mind going down through that list and telling me? I recognize some about all.
Yeah, so we've got, let's see, Cassie Brown. She was the social worker that was here. She talked about how she came out before, but then after, she was in favor of that, the project that was going forward. But that after listening, there was more that needed to be done. You guys recall that?
She was a social worker from Smithson.
Yeah, yeah. And then we got Ron Williams. So he's also a social worker with, and his specialty is housing. He's Floyd Williams' son. I don't know if anybody knows him.
Coach Lee?
Yeah.
I know him.
Tasha Stokes. She got up and spoke there that evening. She's got neighborhood-specific knowledge. Chad McMullins, he represents, go ahead.
The Minister of the Lines.
Yeah. Rick Rogers. So we included him. He wasn't here at the meeting, but with his work at Embassy House, that's a good program.
Good.
Yeah.
I believe what I wanted was somebody from Embassy House.
Yeah, we don't want to do anything that would adversely affect them. So we decided it'd be a good idea to go ahead and include him. I went ahead and went by his place of life and finally got ahold of him on the phone and he was willing and able to serve. Carrie Brown, she was the social worker from Columbia.
Columbia.
Yeah. So there at the end. Denise Hawkins, she's got neighborhood-specific knowledge. She lives right there next to the cafe. Samantha Gilpin, she is Executive Director of United Way. And then, of course, Cassie Brown. I don't know why I listed her on there twice, but the same lady.
What's her, Cassie?
There's Carrie.
Oh, Carrie Brown. Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Wait. Mother and daughter.
So Cassie Brown's from Smithson. And then.
Yeah, honey, is Carrie Brown from Columbia?
Yeah, Carrie Brown's from Columbia.
Carrie.
And no relation.
Sam Brown, you would, with the Sam family. The North Organization, she's part of that.
You need a motion?
Yeah.
Do you want to, you want Arlene to read the?
Yeah, we can do that.
Essentially go down?
Yeah.
Okay, from Mayor Andrew Dawson, date May ninth, 2022. New appointments to the Transitional Services Committee. Cassie Brown, Ron Williams, Tasha Stokes, Chad McMullin, Rick Rogers, Carrie Brown, Denise Hawkins, and Samantha Gilpin.
All in favor? All opposed? Having heard none in the motion areas, thank you, guys. Do I have a motion in a second to adjourn? Roll call, please, Arlene.
Robinson. Oldham. Marshall. Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson. Cross. Foster.
Yes.
And Bliss.
Yes.
Okay, now that we've got that out of the way, we have the, our special work session regarding the Water Master Plan. We have representatives from Burns and McDonald's. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Kelvin, City Council. It's good to see you guys again. So I'm Cliff Kate with Burns and McDonald's. So I was here last week. So thank you, guys, for having us this evening. We appreciate the opportunity. Tonight, we're here to talk to you about the Water Master Plan and report the findings from that and our results. Water Master Plan, we started last year as well with the wastewater master plan. It's, the presentation night's going to be very similar in the fact that with the Water Master Plan, we looked at both the linear and the vertical assets. So with the water, we're looking at the linear, which is called the distribution, all the distribution system, transmission distribution system. And then the vertical, we're talking about the facilities. So we look at the facilities of the treatment process. One additional thing we're looking at the water is the water supply. So Ryan's going to talk to you a little bit about that tonight. But with the Water Master Plan, similar to the wastewater master plan, we work very closely together with both groups. We have a wastewater team, we have a water team. But a lot of the, a lot of the information that we got from both of them, we utilize together. That and with a comprehensive plan. So when we look at your existing conditions, what your system looks like, looks like right now under existing conditions. But then we also look at it under future demands. So we looked at the comprehensive plan and we talked about population growth and where the growth of the city is going. That was all taken into consideration when we look at the Water Master Plan as well. So Ryan Scott's here to present the Water Master Plan tonight and go through all those details. But we appreciate the opportunity that we've had the past year. Appreciate the opportunity to work with your staff. They were great to work with. Took us tours of the facility plant. Talked to us about a lot of the issues that they have on a daily basis, but they talk about their demands, how much water they use. And Ryan will get more into that. So as part of the Water Master Plan tonight, is with me is Ryan, Ryan Scott. Ryan was the project manager on that. He worked with a few other individuals that are listed up here. They're not here this evening, but Ryan's going to take the yeoman's load tonight and talk about the project. As we started out last week, we always like to start out with a, I didn't see it in here. Didn't make it in here. A safety moment. So last week, we talked about the safety moment as we're walking around. Your operators are working in facilities where they need to be careful. Tonight, we just have a general safety moment and that's really basic, is washing your hands. So we're talking about water and the importance of washing your hands. And you know, as we go through COVID and we go through other seasons where a lot of sicknesses are, a lot of diseases can be prevented through washing your hands. And it's recommended that you wash your hands for 20 seconds at a time with soap. And so we're just promoting washing hands more often. So with that, we'll step right into the Water Master Plan. I think you've seen some, a familiar figure, but Ryan's going to step through this process.
Thank you, thank you. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and present, you know, the results of our master plan. It was a very, it was a very exciting project. You know, anytime that we march into a water master planning effort where one has not been done in the past or where it's been many decades since, there's a lot of really institutional knowledge that has to be resurrected so we can understand what happened, what was, what is now, and then really figure out what that path to the future looks like, you know, as we march in that direction. So tonight's presentation, we're going to follow this workflow. I'm going to start off with a little bit on just describing what Sedalia's water system makes up. We'll move into some model development where we'll detail how we built a digital model of your water distribution system. And then we'll march into a lot of the foundations and criteria we use as your, for your hydraulic analysis to understand where we might have deficits with respect to what are really three fundamental systems within your water system. That's a supply system, that's a treatment system, and then that distribution system that delivers water to the 10,000-plus customers here in Sedalia. After that, we'll kind of go through our future conditions to understand, okay, we, at that point, we know where we are now with respect to capacity triggers. But what do we, what do we need to have in place to march forward? And to march forward with a plan that not only has transparency, but also flexibility. One thing that I always communicate early on in our projects is that what is, what is for certain is that plans will change, right? So as long as we understand the framework for how decisions were made, how things were sized, we can handle that change should it come in the future in terms of either timing of an improvement or the size of an improvement. So, and then we'll, we'll end with what is the capital improvements plan, where we go through each one of those systems in detail, what that CIP looks like, and then finally, execution. But what I'm going to start with today is really just simply, what is Sedalia's water system? What is it made up of? How is it different than your collection and sanitary, your storm system? Just simply put, those sanitary storm systems, those are all gravity-fed. Think of those as a water park you could slide down if the pipes were big enough, right? Except it's not going to be very clean. Your water distribution system is a completely pressurized network. And that's the distinction that I would draw there between these two different utilities. Your treated water system is treated for potable water and it's pressurized by pumps that deliver water into your distribution system. So up here, we kind of have those three areas. You'll see your raw water supply system being supplied by, what is shown there is five wells. It's actually six wells that pump groundwater from your aquifer to the water filtration plant where it is, goes through a series of hydraulic and chemical processes to bring that raw water into a potable water environment that's ready for consumption by your customers. At the end of that filtration plant is the high-service pump station that ultimately delivers that pressure to your water distribution system and to your customers. Now, within that water distribution system, there's a couple of sub-systems, if you will. The city has a mix of both ground and elevated storage in their distribution system. The elevated tanks are easy to spot. If you're driving down 16th Street, you'll see a, what I think is a one and a half million gallon elevated tank. And then not too far from here is the Main Street Elevated Tank. There's a ground storage tank on the north side of town called Waterloo Ground Storage Tank. It's paired with a pump station. Because that ground storage tank cannot deliver water into that pressurized network without itself being actually pumped into the system. And then one of the unique things about Sedalia's water system is you guys also have four groundwater wells that have disinfection at their wellhead that also can pump right into the distribution system. So really, from a supply and treatment standpoint, you have a very robust system in that you have a large water filtration plant delivering water to the city from the south. And then across the distribution system, you have these, what I phrase as direct distribution system wells that the operators and city staff can use really to meet their peaking demands. And that would be anything that the water filtration plant isn't putting out at that time. So looking at those supply wells, they do have, they play a very important role with respect to how things are evaluated from a capacity standpoint, as well as, you know, pushing us out in the future. And just, you'll see how valuable that those wells are as we go through these analyses. So this is, this is just a, really what is a snapshot of the water distribution system model that we have. And I'll kind of get into the distribution system model here in a bit. But this shows us where, not only where your current water service area is, but it also details the size of pipes and to some extent, you know, the capacity of your system. There's approximately 180 miles of pipe within your distribution system. And really, that just entails everything four inches and larger. Now, there is also another network of smaller mains, you know, to feed individual houses and customer connections and things of that nature. But this is what is plugged into our water distribution system model. So we've got the water filtration plant there in the south. That takes the potable water and pumps it up into the system. You can see the spread of storage as well as those direct distribution system wells that are located within the city. So you just kind of heard me talk about a water distribution system model. Well, what is, what is a water distribution system model? It's really a digital representation of your system. So our model includes all of those facilities that we just discussed, but the entire pipe network. But really, what gives life to that model is your customer water demand information. So we worked with, you know, the city's building department. We looked at what is the average day demand virtually for every customer in your system. And then because we had an address and we knew an amount, we can apply those demands within the model. And that allows us to evaluate water system hydraulics. And it gives us the ability to model what is not only your existing system, but also what are the future growth scenarios that we're working with, that were informed by your comprehensive plan, and see how those demands impact our capital improvements. So where does that model come from? It really starts from a grassroots level of just understanding to, in a very fine detail, everything from fire hydrant locations, the type of material that you guys have present in your distribution system, where your valves are at. Again, where your 10,000-plus customers are at, and even what type of customers they are. So we were getting very, very good quality and very granular data just from the city's water system GIS to help us build up the framework for what is your water distribution system model. The next step in standing up that model is a very important piece. I call it intelligence integration. You know, in short, it's always a rush to find which person at the city is within six months of retirement and has worked here for decades. And how do we get to him as quickly as we can to get that data dump? You know, to understand that institutional knowledge. That may not be written down about your system. It's, I always say, it's a race against time to find that person. We found them in plenty of time. And we were able to meet with them on many different occasions and in each one of their systems. Me and our team at Burns and Mack, we had several different site visits throughout the entire project. We went to all of the key facilities to understand what their nuances were that you just can't tell from, you know, reading the nameplate on a motor, for example. We have to understand, you know, what are the operators' tendencies for operating their facilities? And we can take that information and actually build that intelligence into our model. And we've done that here successfully. We worked with, I'll just comment real quick. We worked with a variety of people throughout this, you know, project from within the city. The Water Department, Public Works, Community Development, the Finance Department, and the Water Pollution Control folks. And you know, we, Burns and Mack, we delivered that wastewater master plan to you. And so we had, you know, we were all building from the same, from the same foundation, you know. And when utilities can plan like that, it makes for a more effective evaluation on your system, more holistic look. And it was very, it was a very worthwhile and excellent effort to bring all three of these projects together. The next thing that we do with your, with your model after we've stood it up from GIS, we bring it into a modeling software environment. And now that we have a good digital representation of your model, there's still one ingredient missing, and that is, how do we know that this model is going to perform like it actually does in the system? So we go through a very rigorous calibration effort. And that calibration effort requires field testing. So that field testing, it includes what we call just data loggers that we position across your water distribution system. We place those on fire hydrants in order to, and all they do is measure pressure. I think our recording interval was, it measures pressure once every minute. We left those data loggers on for about a week. And then on that last bit, I say, you know, we plan, we measure, we stress. The stress part is actually doing a fire hydrant test. We sprinkle those fire hydrant tests in and around our data loggers so that when we do open that fire hydrant, we understand what the spread is or what that loss in pressure is, not only locally at the fire hydrant, but hey, did this affect pressure in customers two blocks away, 10 blocks away? What is that, what does that area of influence really look like? And so that's, that's the, we stress part is when we do the fire hydrant testing. And this fire, the field testing plan, that is what gives us our calibration data. We calibrate to the actual field-tested measures. And if there's one thing I leave you with, you know, what is, what is model calibration? Model calibration is really your confidence in its ability to simulate not only what these folks are doing right now, but it's the confidence in our ability to run different scenarios on the fly. And we had an excellent calibration status. We didn't find, you know, any of our calibration points outside, outside the norm. So what that, what I'm communicating is we have a very, we're very confident in the status of our calibration, which is going to yield us confident results and inform master planning in a much more granular level. Okay, so we had 14 data loggers that were measuring pressure throughout the town. And then we tested up to, I think we tested right at 29 or 30 fire hydrants. And we had, we had, you know, great success in that exercise. A lot of times, that field testing effort can be brought with trying to find, you know, an adequate number of hydrants that are going to perform like they should. And I really, of the 30 fire hydrants that we were on, there was only one that I might have attributed to maybe some, probably needed some operation and maintenance. But you know, with the city's thousands of fire hydrants, only coming across one in the 30 is a good, was pleasantly welcome, actually, so. All right, model calibration. I'm not going to get into the nuts and bolts of this spreadsheet, but this is what details, you know, in a quantitative manner just how well our model results performed against what was actually done in the field testing. And if you look up and down that row, we have every single, or, you know, the gray rows and the white rows, those represent individual fire hydrant tests. And then across the top, we have our data logger results. And you'll see we're within probably one to two, one to three PSI across the board. So again, that's, that really denotes our confidence in the model calibration, so. Now.
On the, on the field data numbers, say 40 to 50. You guys had a 1,000 to 1,800. Whatever does this make connection to our pressure? 59 PSI and then some models, you have 41 PSI. And then blue. That 59, is that the standard PSI that should have? Or how is that related to standard?
That's a good question. So those results on that side of the table, that actually reflects the localized fire hydrant test result in and of itself. So where it says, where it has, looks like the field data is what's listed in blue and then our model results are what's listed in, or I'm sorry, the field data is listed in black. Model results are in, are in blue. And so that represents what actually happened at that fire hydrant. So that's not an interest, that's what we measured and that's what we simulated. We are not calibrating, just for clarity, because you did point out, you know, a difference in pressure. There is a difference, but we don't calibrate to the actual fire hydrant that we're flushing. We're calibrating to the data loggers that are in the water distribution system around it. And the reason for that is the losses through a fire hydrant and its service laterals are so dynamic that they're hard to, they're hard to quantify, if you will. And it doesn't provide, we're not trying to calibrate to the fire hydrant service lateral. We're trying to calibrate really the network of your water mains that are feeding that fire hydrant. Okay, we'll march into the hydraulic analysis on your existing systems. So it really all starts with an evaluation on where you guys have been in terms of your water demand. What we're illustrating in this figure right here in red, these are your historical maximum day demands going back to about 2003. That maximum day demand is really what was your highest 24-hour production throughout the 365 days of that year. So that max day demand is a very important number and its history is very important. What's listed there in blue is just your annual average for the, for that particular year. Both of those numbers are important. The max day is more important. That's what we're going to size our facilities for. That is physical, you know, that was measured data. And so when we start our water demand projections, as you'll see here in a little bit, we don't want to start with evaluating a max day demand less than what some of your peaks have been. We start higher because we want to understand that as you guys do grow in the future, can we handle those escalations in maximum day demand? And so I'll just kind of point out a couple of numbers to you. And again, on that red line, I think what's important for your eye to draw towards is going to be that 5.89 MGD in 2005. And then you can see your next peak there in 2012 at 6.2. And then in 2015, again, right at about 6.23. So those are kind of the three points in your history that are going to set the tone, if you will, for maximum day water demand projections moving forward. We're less concerned about max day dips. We know that a lot of that can be influenced by a variety of factors. That could be weather, that could be, maybe you're not selling as much wholesale water as you had in the past. You know, there have even been, you know, what I would say marginal impacts due to the pandemic. Most of the utilities that we're doing planning for, and right here in Missouri and throughout the Midwest, you know, depending on the community, Sedalia is very unique. Every community is unique. But with respect to the pandemic, where we were seeing probably some short net revenue incomes from their residential customer class was kind of being offset by the, or I'm sorry, upticks in residential were on account of smaller, you know, some small declinations in your commercial water usage. And you couldn't really see that here, at least in my opinion. You couldn't really see it here in Sedalia. And I think a lot of that, again, is unique to Sedalia. You guys have a very large transient daytime population. And I'll go through some other, some other trends that were noteworthy, you know, as we evaluated your water demand. Yeah.
So, I mean, major fire events really would affect these. And then what's the black dotted line? It's brown on the left.
Yeah. I apologize. So that black dotted line is what we call the max day to average day ratio. So it's really just the red line divided by the blue line. And we use that ratio in our projections. And then secondly, your other question. So we went through this demand profile. And then secondly, your other question, so we went through this demand profile with the city, and we actually just went through kind of year by year, and we all asked ourselves that exact question.
Why is falling from 2016 down to 2020? What are the events that make those peaks?
You know, that is a question for your 10,000-plus customers. The water, this is, this maximum day demand is a, it comes from the meters, the high service pump station meters at your plant, and it also includes any contributions from your distribution system wells. So this declination that you're seeing from 2015 to 2020 is just because your customers didn't demand as much as in years past over a 24-hour period. And that is about all you can conclude with that detail.
But we can make it a little easier too. Those have been weather years. There's not been as much outside watering during the year.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you well enough.
Outside watering, those are wet years. We simply don't provision much water with these.
So you think it's just seasonal and it's watering?
Sure.
I mean, it's the dry year, I mean, are those the dry years where 25, 2005, 2012, 2015?
Yeah.
Okay, that's an interesting question.
So we even get more granular as we look at your detail. We look at your water sales by customer class. You know, within the framework of the billing system, they're identified as residential, commercial, industrial, and then tax exempt, which is other, how that's shown on there. We have changed that other designation to tax exempt, so there's consistency. So you can follow that, you know, leader from the billing system into this water master plan. If we look at your water sales by customer class, we also have to understand, you know, what are your wholesale water obligations? You guys have a couple of meters, two or three meters for wholesale service. And, you know, if we just looked at the maximum amounts on an annual basis for your wholesale water sales, and this is true, it's always been below your contractual maximum, but for planning purposes, we're not really concerned with how much they've had in the past on a wholesale basis. It's really what you're contractually obligated to supply. And so we build that detail into our water demand projections as well. And then that last bit over there is kind of alludes to what Brenda was just speaking to on dry air conditions. We take a look at, the first thing we do is actually determine from your monthly water demands, where is your peak demand season? And that peak demand season, at least since 2016, occurs June, July, and August. And then we kind of take a look at that particular season, and then we compare that to both temperature and precipitation norms within that peak demand season. And you can absolutely see those inflection points that weather has had on your historical peaks with respect to maximum day demand. I was a mouthful. I'm sorry. Are there any questions on that? Okay, so now that we understand, you know, with good detail what your water profile looks like, we can start to build upon that and deliver water demand projections. At least water demand projections are so important within the framework of your master plan because that's what identifies, that's what triggers improvement. So when your system, when these demand projections are evaluated in your hydraulic model of the system, we can see where there are shortcomings and see what improvements are needed to deliver these maximum day demand projections. So our projections run out a five-year planning period and a 20-year planning period, which is consistent with the planning periods from the wastewater master plan. And these demand projections include everything that's residential, from the 353 redevelopment area to any residential opportunities north or south of the city that were identified in the comprehensive plan, industrial, all of the mixed-use plans that are happening here within the city, and then obviously the degree of potential annexation that can happen with industrial customers, for example. So once we have our water demand projections, now we need to really demonstrate what are our demand projections mean with respect to the capacities of our existing facilities? And are they meeting the level of service that you guys are delivering to all of your customers within the water service area? So we have, and I'm not going to go through in detail on each of these, but again, we're in this master plan, we're looking at your supply systems, your treatment system, and then your distribution system. And the level of service for each of those is kind of the driving force behind, okay, if your max day demand is this, and your capacity for this particular facility is lower, we need to shore that up. And that's what's represented here in our level of service. I'll probably just comment on, at least for the distribution system, one of the more common ones is to deliver, you know, at least a minimum of 35 or 40 PSI to all of your customers in the city. And then for a fire flow event, you want to be able to deliver, or maintain more or less, maintain a minimum pressure of 20 PSI as well as the fire flow demand in all of your maximum day demand. So. Yeah, so, you know, just for standard operating pressure, the minimum, that, you know, level of service you guys are providing, you guys are well above that. So you guys provide an adequate spread of pressure across the city, so. Okay, so with our level of service and our water demand projections, we can start marching into these capacity assessments. And so you're going to see, this is a similar type of slide that you'll see for each of the systems. This is for your water supply. What you're seeing there in the, represented with the yellow bars, represents your total raw water capacity. What's in gray is typically more important, depending on the category we're talking about. That is the firm capacity. So we are providing a level of service for firm capacity conditions. So firm capacity for your raw water system, for example, is going to be the capacity of the wells without the largest well in service. And that is just prudent planning. When you take out that largest producing well, you're accounting for all of the periods that will inevitably happen throughout a well's life, which is standard operation and maintenance. Don't expect, as you plan, to have your full capacity in hand at all times. So that's what firm capacity planning is for. So with respect to water supply, you'll also see another line on here in the rest of these slides, that black line. That was, that line represents your raw water firm capacity plus the ability of your distribution system wells. And the presence of those distribution system wells really has a ton of shape on the supply plan, the treatment plan, the pumping plan, because it gives you really an extra tool in your toolbox used to fight these max day demand projections. So on this line, again, our red line is the maximum day demand projection. We have our first supply deficit occurring in or about, you know, based on these projections, between 2028 and 2029, from a supply standpoint. From a water treatment standpoint, for the facility plant, the deficit occurs sometime between 2033 and 2034. And again, we're taking into account with your treatment capacity what your direct distribution system wells offer in addition to your water filtration plan. And then, once you have the supply, and once you have the treatment capacity, your last step then is to pump it into the system. And this is our pumping capacity assessment where a deficit would occur sometime between 2035 and about 2036, based on these demand projections. With respect to your storage facilities that you guys have in town, we do a quantitative storage analysis that, again, is based on regulatory requirements that shape the level of service for your customers. So for storage, the minimum storage requirement that you need to have on hand at all times is really, includes two items. It includes equalization storage and fire storage. And that's what you'd like to keep out in your water distribution system. So that equalization storage volume, that represents anything in excess of really what your water filtration plan is delivering on a max day basis. So it's really those peaking demands that are usually experienced in the city. As people wake up, more water use is being had. People are taking showers, they're getting ready for school, they're getting ready to go to work. There's a peak in the day there, and then there's usually another peak right around noon as people march to lunch, and then you can kind of see when people come home as well, there's another gradual peak there. So what that equalization storage represents is how much you need to hold in storage to handle those peaking times that are in excess of that 24-hour average. Then the fire storage, that is a volumetric requirement. Your maximum fire flow requirement in the city is 3,750 gallons per minute. We created, or we established the volumetric portion, if you will, is that particular rate over a period of time is going to give you a volume. And so that, again, that minimum storage requirement that you need to hold in storage is those two things. Anything in excess of that can be termed emergency storage, and that emergency storage just means that you have a surplus, basically. There's also another area that I'll draw your attention to. There is a difference between what is effective storage and what is ineffective storage. Just because you have elevated storage doesn't necessarily mean that you can actually utilize all of it, as is the case here. You may or may not be aware that those towers can only be filled to about, I think, 50% full. As we start raising the water level in those towers, your potential for water main break escalates rapidly. So the operators have this almost down to a science. They know what levels, what those thresholds are before that water main break potential starts to escalate. And so that is what we're talking about between, the difference between effective storage and ineffective storage. While you might have a million gallons of elevated storage just right over here, you only have access to about 50% of them, and that's when it's full. And so we have to understand really what these effective volumes are in order to figure out, do you have enough to meet your minimum storage requirement? Because we can't bank on those tanks really being full. And, you know, so we look at all of your stuff, all of your storage tanks, so that's Waterloo ground storage. We even include, there's a million gallons at the water filtration plant. There's an effective storage component to that. You don't have access to all 1 million gallons for distribution system needs, so we take that into account. So long story short, on at least the storage analysis for your existing system, based on the existing maximum day demand, you guys have a storage surplus. So at least for the existing system, there's no immediate need for any more storage within your system.
That's, just to make sure I understood that, so the storage surplus with effective storage?
Correct.
Plus of what we can use?
Yep.
With a look at the development that in our master plan, I mean, and it's all storage, it doesn't have any effect on pressure or available pressure, right? As far as elevated storage.
Yeah, that's true. Now, we also, you guys have, what is, you know, you have the Waterloo ground storage tank that is termed pumped ground storage. So what's important to include that is emergency power, which you guys have.
We have four wells down there. And that's the four that are sanitized at the well site.
Yes, yes, but we don't include your water supply contribution from those direct distribution system wells into your storage evaluation.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, storage is what you should, can have in the air and available, and/or on the ground available to you at any point. Because you would be using your supply sources just to meet your demands. You want to rely on your storage to deliver everything that your supplies are.
So in my mind, I'm just trying to square supply with wastewater two weeks ago, and we've got, part of our plan in the future is a new wastewater plant to the north, but you're telling me I don't need elevated storage?
Not for your water system.
Okay, great. You kind of go with it.
So moving forward, also with the distribution, so that the pumping, we reviewed from the plant, we just went through the storage that's in your distribution system. Now we're looking at, okay, what are the pressures in and around town? And again, these pressure results come from your hydraulic model. They assume the maximum effective level that you guys can hold in storage, and you guys have an adequate spread of pressure. You know, your lower pressures are going to be between about 40 and 50 PSI naturally in this area. It's located a little bit further away from the plant, and it's also at some of the higher elevations here. You can see the blues and the purples. Those are your higher pressure areas. A lot of those higher pressure areas are going to be attributed to elevation. So where you have lower elevation areas, you're going to have higher pressure compared to higher elevation areas. So these are the results of your pressure. So no problems here, you guys are delivering, you know, the industry standard level of service to all of your customers. We also look at, you know, the other, probably the more important one, it's great that you can provide pressure under normal conditions, but is that pressure adequate in an amount that you can also deliver the fire flow requirements to all of your customers? And there are just really a few areas that have some low fire flow availability. Just every single one of them actually is really just a result of long runs of dead end pipe. So anytime that you have a lot of six-inch pipe in your system that is, you know, a long dead end, as you try to deliver those higher fire flow rates through those pipes, there's going to be a drop in pressure. And there are just a few areas in here where there's less than the requirement that we have capital improvements for. You guys looking, figuring out where you live?
That's what I'm doing.
I'll stay here for a second. Yeah, so we're, you know, it's actually not just the red, it's actually where you have the, some of the yellows as well. You know, what I would say here is very rarely do I march across a city with this kind of profile and this size and only have this much. So I would, you know, compliment all of the council and staff's efforts on the water main replacement projects I think that you guys just completed within the last year. I think Brenda had mentioned that was upwards of $13 million worth of improvement. Now, had those not been put in place, what you would have seen is a lot wider spread of yellow through your system, and those can rack up very quickly. So this is a byproduct, a positive, I will say, of those capital investments.
And Ryan, what kind of grade would you give the distribution system?
I wouldn't give it a grade. I would call it very resilient. I would call it very resilient. You'll have to read the master plan to get the rest of the opinion, right? Okay, let's see. All right, so future conditions. So everything we've gone through up to now is kind of the state of what is, and now we're going to start talking about what will be, based on the growth strategy that was identified with the comprehensive plan. So this is our... So this is our our water master planning area, if you will. What I have there in blue is really just your existing water distribution system and then everything in that light pink, purple hue covers, you know, really what could be. So the question then becomes, okay, well, if we know where we're going to grow, what kind of growth is it? Is it residential? Is it commercial? Is it industrial? We have to take all of these factors into account in order to really size and understand maybe what the limitations are of your existing system so we can size capital improvements to deliver that level of service, not only to your existing customers, but to also these future customers. And so this is what it shapes out to be based on those plans. And what I just brought in here is really the water distribution system network beyond your existing network. Now, what you're not really seeing here is really the engineering behind it and that is in sizing each of these water mains for the water demand projections that we prepared. But we go through, so not just for your existing system, but for the five-year planning period and the 20-year planning period, we go through each of your systems from a supply capacity, treatment, pumping, storage and distribution. We go through that whole cycle again and we compare what those capacity-based needs are against the associated water demand projection. So with respect to supply, we knew where our deficit was before, so that's an immediate trigger, right, to to overcome that deficit. We've identified two raw water wells, those be implemented and those raw water wells would feed or supply your water filtration plant. That that happening, just at least on this timeline, somewhere between 2028, 2029. We also did earmark another distribution system well somewhere around 2033. That kind of gets your total source water firm capacity above our water demand projection. And so when we see our black line exceeding, you know, our red line, that that is the objective, okay? With respect to treatment planning at the water filtration plant, we went through, you know, not only just a general evaluation of your processes, but we we did a more in-depth capacity review of your primary treatment mechanisms, your filter loading and your hydraulic capacity to the plant. And that that allowed us to identify what we perceive to be really a no or a low-cost CIP that would increase your water filtration capacity from what is right now between six and six and a half MGD. We have identified a CIP that can get you up to 10 MGD, okay? So that is a a huge bang for what is going to be a low-cost CIP. And that jump right there is attributed to what we identified as hydraulic bottleneck within the the filtration plant itself. And eliminating that bottleneck is just simply the demolition of really some some basins that that don't serve any process or treatment benefit. So eliminating that bottleneck through there will increase your what what is the both the primary treatment and hydraulic capacity. And then as we continue to evaluate your systems, the the final thing that we do is a a filter evaluation. And it was it was it was by our evaluation that if we can do, and this is really for regulatory needs, we can actually re-rate your filter loadings by doing a filter evaluation. And when we can re-rate that filter loading with MDNR, it gives you that, at least that regulatory permission, if you will, to treat at a higher rate and deliver higher rates of flow to your plant. So this was, we didn't expect this. Usually when you're looking at these kinds of escalations, you don't find them in one CIP. That one CIP is more commonly, you're going to need a new plant. But that is not what we found here. So this was another good win and unexpected win through this evaluation.
Do you have any idea on price, what that would cost?
Yeah, we have, we have those itemized in our CIP. And then, you know, pending pending any feedback or comments we get from you guys, there will be a more detailed list than than what you'll see here in this presentation. So it is clearly identified what that would be. Okay, so this is our our pumping plan. Now that we have a supply plan, we have a treatment plan, the last leg of that run is, okay, now we've got to get it into the distribution system. So we've identified, how do we get you guys up to 10 MGD of of firm capacity pumping? We are recommending you guys build a new high-service pump station. Where the existing high-service pumps are at right now, they're working, you know, fine and they have been for decades, but paired with, you know, very, very old pipe in some of these parts that a complete replacement and an overhaul is going to be better. You guys still have maybe the De La Val pumps, are there two of them left? Those pumps date back to maybe the 40s or the 50s, 1954. And so, you know, our our supply chain issues for things that we need right now, just imagine what they would be for something that was built in 1954. But where that high-service pump station is located within your facility presents a significant constructability. What'd you say? Constructability, not concerns, but it'll make the construction more difficult with how water is supplying those pumps and then where that piping is actually located that discharges into your distribution system is in a gallery far below grade level and would make for for very, very difficult. So paired with not only the age and even some of the condition, the city's actually replacing two of those high-service pumps right now, we would recommend a a new high-service pump station in the future.
But but we've got to get them up to grade, up to grade.
Yeah, so.
You're literally saying they're too deep and it's a safety issue and it's a.
Not that they're too deep, it's just that they're, the piping is inaccessible for construction equipment. I'm not sure how we would retrofit some of the discharge lines in the bottom of the plant.
They're in a retrofitted type station. That the current high, is this an accurate statement?
That current high service service pump station was kind of retrofitted to fit the the plumbing that was available at the time?
That's out of the water works?
Yeah.
I've never been to the basement, I'll have to come in.
Bring your rain boot.
Who knows what's down there?
With with respect to your storage plan, you know, earlier I concluded that, you know, based on the existing demands in the system, you don't need any additional storage. I I we are holding to that recommendation from now and even 20 years into the future. You guys have an adequate amount of storage. I think more importantly, I like where your storage is situated within the distribution system. You kind of have it on the east, you have it on the west and then you have a nice amount of ground storage in the north. You know, obviously coming up from the south is your water filtration plant, so. But again, that's, you know, only a portion of that we're we're actually looking at for storage. So for now, through the end of this planning period, we're not recommending any additional storage be placed out in your system. Yeah, there can be, you know, a lot of it boils down to the materials that were used and the construction type that was used, but we don't see any signs, you know, your main street tank, for example, we don't see any signs of, at least there were no apparent signs of deterioration or loss in functionality with with respect to your storage vessels. So they all require, they're just like any distribution system asset. They require maintenance, they require cleaning, they require, you know, fresh coating applications. So it's just like anything.
So the main street tower, we just put the lead joint, I have it, so that was all been replaced with the west. That was repainted two years ago?
Yeah, and time plot. Okay, so marching into, you know, what we use your water distribution system model for, was to understand what the level of service that we that has been established and the water demand projection, what does that really mean? Do we have enough capacity in our system? And, you know, again, you never have any expectations on on what what your your CIP should be in the distribution system without doing the evaluation. It can be anything from, heck, you guys have a lot of fire flow you need to address to, not really much, you have a lot of capacity in your system. I think we're kind of on the the latter side of that. There are not a lot of fire flow-driven CIPs that we identified, just in the areas that we spotted there in the existing system. Really what takes precedence or priority, if you will, with your water main improvements are going to be the hydraulically driven CIPs. And and that is, they are given that designation as hydraulic because they're higher priority. That's the capacity that you need in your system to meet that level of service in and to deliver those water demand projections. So there's a, there's one big one that's kind of going through town. It it connects to a 20-inch virtually coming out of your water filtration plant and then tying into what is an existing 16-inch stubout. That was part of your recently completed water main improvements up there. Now, I know it's it's not deceptive, but it is a hydraulic driven improvement that goes through your existing network, but it's largely, largely governed by the presence of what we're planning for as a new industrial user on the north side of town. So we we need to call it hydraulic because it's going through the system. It's not a development-driven improvement. A development-driven improvement is going to be something entirely different. That's going to be an improvement where you guys have no infrastructure in place to feed a potential customer and that that is new pipe being laid down to supply that customer. So that is, you know, really the one comment that I would make with within this five-year list of improvements is that that large hydraulic CIP is largely governed by the presence of a new large user outside of your water service area.
And as we make changes, this model updates then? So like if we do a project to increase your fire flow, then you your model and your calibrated model now will update without remeasure or?
Absolutely. It it's not an automated process, but, you know, it takes engineers' time for to develop plans. Once we get those as-built plans or even the design plans, we can take that detail right and write into our model, update it and make sure and actually confirm that the sizing is is correct and and that's how we can, that's how we update your model over the years. So we always emphasize our, not only our master plan, but our models of the system be living documents. They shouldn't just be sitting on on a shelf collecting dust. We should be constantly updating these models as new improvements are made.
So Ryan, back from the hydraulics, that red line, that pipe was identified in phase two of the original upgrades to our transition line. The code pipe currently coming out of the plant, so we know that that pipe needs to be replaced within a reasonable period of time.
What'd you say, the age on that one?
19.
And and Brenda, you know, to your point, that's that's what we spotted, you know, down there from, yeah, the the two red lines coming from the south side of the system, that's coming out of your water filtration plant. So that's an existing 20-inch and an existing 30-inch. Yeah, that date back to the 20s. So they've performed very well up to this point. I'm not saying that they won't moving forward, but everything does have a life expectancy. And those are critical mains in your system.
What's the material, are they cast or ductile or which which material are they? Is it ace? That's what's.
Okay.
What, what did you say, one of them's concrete? Concrete line, okay. Concrete line what? We're just, okay.
So this is your your 20-year distribution system plan. There are some hydraulic-driven improvements. Also, what we termed as resiliency, that's where we might spot, maybe you have a 12-inch running east-west and then it drops down to a six and then it picks back up with a 12. We look at instances like that and we do some on-the-fly simulations to see if that six were upsized to a 12, if it would convey more water. And we do those analyses all over your system and we only identified a couple of what we call resiliency-type CIPs. The rest are are really development-driven. And again, those are improvements earmarked by areas where you have no existing water infrastructure.
If we have a pipe that's 20 inches in diameter a hundred years ago, how how much effective diameter do we have today?
You know, so it's that's actually one of the things that that our our field testing exercise actually measures, right? And and I would say by and large, you have most of, you have most of it left without without doing an invasive condition assessment on a particular stretch of line, which can be very costly per per foot. I think you'd find that the effective diameter within those pipes coming out of the plant is probably still pretty good. Now, one way, another way to ask that question would also be to the guys at the plant, hey, have you noticed your discharge pressure escalating at all over the years or throughout the decades? Because if you have an escalation in your discharge pressure, that means your diameter is getting smaller, so you need to pump out at a higher pressure. And so far, so far as I know, they are, they are steady and firm at between 119 and 122 PSI from and out of that plant and has been that way for some time.
So Ryan, the other piece is a couple of years ago, we did have a break in the one line and it scoured and if you remember, we started to call from a far away at a truck school about finding material in the line and also it was a bigger one is there, so we scoured the line out.
Yeah, when you get a high rate of flow from a break, what you're really doing is it's like swabbing the inside of that pipe. You are cleaning it out. So while the water main break was, you don't want that to happen, you know, if there is one benefit, it will scour the inside of your pipe and it'll actually restore a little bit of capacity that may have been lost over the years.
Yeah, well, how does it determine what size of pipe you can use because lower sections are down and higher sections are down? Is that how it's determined on size of the pipe that's breathing?
Yeah, so it kind of goes back to our level. We we size a pipe for the water demand it's expected to deliver and and in order to deliver that demand, it has to be delivered at an adequate pressure. And that's where, should it be a six inch or should it be an eight inch, will come into play and and we use the model to to ultimately determine. And, and we use the model to, to ultimately determine what size that needs to be. Now, in water systems, what, what makes some of the guesswork a lot easier, and this is, this is becoming virtually an industry standard, a lot of utilities are putting in a minimum size of eight inch. Now, your system has a lot of three inch, it has a lot of four inch and, and even quite a bit of six. But for new pipe going in the ground, most utilities are kind of moving towards that minimum eight inch. And really, most of the time, what governs that sizing is going to be your fire flow requirement. That is an amount that is well in excess of, you know, the streets that you guys live on. So putting out that fire plus delivering what you're using on a daily basis is, is what governs. And that eight inch is quite a bit of capacity. Yeah, so if, if you're, if you guys lose pressure, and maybe we'll just take the, one of the older mains coming out of the plant as an example. So if there's a major, major water main break on a critical line like that and you drop pressure below 20 PSI for an extended period of time is when you have to start implementing your boil order measures. And so if there's, if there's one thing that you do remember about pressure, remember this, that it acts radially on your pipe, okay? And so when you have lower pressure in your pipe, really what you're trying to do, that minimum threshold, that 20 PSI is trying to keep things out of your pipes. We don't want anything getting into your pipes because we know what's in your pipe right now is potable water that has been treated for regulatory compliance. That makes it healthy for all of your customers to consume. So that 20 PSI is, we don't want, it's more, we don't want anything getting into it from either the groundwater or anything else that, that may happen, so. And then, lastly, so this is kind of our, our capital improvements planning period and it's usually the first page that, that folks will go to. Thank you for all of the engineering, Ryan. What is it going to cost? And in what order do we do that? So that's what we have here. We do have some priority, some prioritization identified here. And, and this is communicated in, in the report. And other than the numbers, what, what I would encourage people to read and remember is that a lot of these CIPs are really being driven by, by large industrial demand that may happen, that are not currently in your water service area. The capacity that you guys have within your existing network, I think is, like I said, very resilient. It will handle a lot of the development in terms of commercial and residential opportunities that you guys do have. But large, what is largely driving some of these bigger numbers are going to be, you know, future customers that, that are not currently here. I'll save you guys the spiel of repeating every number on there and would, this is the last slide that I have, so I'd absolutely welcome any, any, any other questions on our project.
This does not include the, the ongoing replacement of pipe as a worse count?
No, so we're, we're, we're just identifying capital improvements to meet your growth strategy as well as, as meet the existing system needs. So we do have that recommendation. I have a section of our plan that is non-capital recommendations that does discuss in some detail, you know, what water main replacement can look like and some methods for determining maybe where that is by identifying what is the risk of a individual pipe compared to the rest of your system, so. And that would be along the lines of, you know, normal replacement. We do have in here, small mains replacement. That is just anything that's less than four inches. When you guys get out 20 years in the future, that four inch is going to be 60, 70, 80 years old, so plan to replace at least all of that. So that is, that small mains replacement is captured in here, but.
In the 20 year, right? So that's just in the 20 year?
No, no, we're, we're not even fixing an end date.
That could be through the entire.
Yeah, so any, any four inch mains that we're not identifying above, what we're showing there is kind of the catch-all, anything left over that doesn't need to be replaced for, you know, for hydraulic reasons, if you will.
Have we assessed lead and do we, do we need any kind of planning for any, we have any lead based distribution lead? I mean. Huh? So we take care of that as we rebuild our mains and line our mains? Right.
So anywhere the current lead identifies into the service line, give it a dress, okay? Any subdivisions built after a specific timeframe will not have lead present.
Agreed.
So yes, we are in the process, EPA is requiring identification.
Well, I understand, but do we, I mean, I'm kind of hearing we really don't have, like everybody else, an absolute ass build that tells us where it all is.
Of course not, because we don't control the private lines from.
Well, yeah, that's a really good point, right? But as far as our distribution system, we're doing all we can do.
We're just like everybody else. We'll have to go through the process. EPA is currently working on specific forms, going to have these fills out and you have to make contact with every customer, have it exist in law today. And that is coming within the next 36 months. So we know that's coming.
But you're, you're happy budgeting that on a yearly basis, not in capital improvements?
Does the federal government understand exactly what they are putting on small communities when they set an artificial deadline for replacement?
Yeah, and that's affecting service lines. So you get my question, is now when we put it in this capital improvements project or are we confident?
Very likely. The reason that that day the gallows today is completely spent there is because of elements there in that joint pipe in the base of that building that is likely to be used as a reason for replacement during the cycle.
And we still have everything on the other side of the meter that?
We'll have to be aware and we know that we have homes that were built during a period where lead was problematic.
So is EPA going to make us look on the other side of the meter too and? I mean, yeah, we're getting too deep in the weeds, but okay.
But every city's going to, they're facing the same issue.
I understand, yeah. I, I know, I know, and we've done more than most, but.
Is there a lot of work to be done to answer this? Much to do and so far no.
But it's hard to budget for it when you really don't know what, what or when the requirements are coming.
Not specific enough yet.
Okay. And how much help's coming and on and on and on.
Also, I'd say the other cities start with it first and see what they're doing. So how they're doing the evaluation, how they're assessing it, so making sure they're doing it right and cost effective too.
Okay. Some of that too is, is overlap with lines, mains that we know need to be replaced, you know, that we keep patching and, you know, so that, that ongoing deal, so. And you said that you've got that in the master plan. Did you, do you have an overlay where you've got this and that overlay so we can?
The, the recommendation we have in the master plan is to start looking at your water main replacements in terms of risk. That risk is the composition of a likelihood of failure and a consequence of failure score that can be quantified. And so you can add, that would be a, a, more a, a consequence of failure. And so you can, you can absolutely build those layers into that kind of analysis. So that is what the, the master plan recommends to the city is, is as you march into your water main replacement, consider looking at risk as part of that assessment on not only what to replace, but where to replace, I think more importantly, so.
Okay, so you're recommending that, but it hasn't been done yet, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah. That was, that risk assessment is, was outside the scope of this water master plan.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember the numbers. And it depends on how it develops.
And when it does. So similar to the wastewater master plan we discussed with the trigger point, right? When something happens, when we do it, not do it now and wait for it to come.
So that cuts a number in half. Still a big number.
Yeah. Any other questions? Well, we'd like to thank Brenda and her staff and Dave and William and Jeremy back here for helping out with the, with the program throughout the whole process and their big help and we meet with them quite regularly and Ryan talks to them quite often through the development of this, so we, we appreciate that and so with that.
We, we've got the engineering done that we need if the federal funds become available. I mean, like we did with place water. Right, if I remember correctly from a couple of weeks ago, we've got things in place already so that we can apply. Is that a similar situation here? No, I, but I mean, if, if we have an opportunity to apply for federal, we have, we're, we're.
The master plan concerns, the planning document.
Yeah, yeah, similar way to waste one.
Okay, correct.
Well, any other questions, guys? Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
We'll go ahead and close this, uh, work site. Do you want me to just write you checks?